We will officially call the work session to order on April 24, 2019 at 7:01 PM. Thank you for everyone that is in attendance. Just a couple of items before we get into the agenda. If there's anyone here under Guest for item A, Paul Calucci de Marco Group, Baytown Wall, that has been withdrawn. So if anybody is here on the Baytown Wall, that has been withdrawn. The other item that has been withdrawn is a website update. We had Dave Renner was going to give us an update and actually we're still going back and forth with our vendor and so that will be on an agenda over the next couple of work sessions. The third item is that we have added one item and it's unusual to do that but the Board felt that it was good to at least have some conversation. And that's under Action Items, Greenlight Fiber Underground Installation Approval Process. And so that is a new item that will be added. So I'll repeat all of that once we hit the appropriate section of the ordinance -- or excuse me, of the agenda. The -- I'll let the ministry reflect that all the Board members except Andy Moore is in attendance. Andy is out of town. We have nothing to report on our monthly reports because everything was submitted per the Town Board Resolution at our organizational meeting. So thank you for all the monthly reports from department heads. We have no public hearings this evening. We do have our minutes of March 27, 2019. I would entertain a motion of approval for those minutes.
I'll move on.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on those minutes? Seeing none, then I would ask for a poll vote, please. I'll ask for those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that carries for our minutes. Again, under Guest, A will not be discussed this evening. That's the wall at Baytown. We'll move on to item B, which is Evan Shutt, 1068 Plank Road. This is a discussion about a farmstead area modification. And I see that Evan has not made the meeting, so if he comes, he will be slotted in further down. And in the interest of everyone's time for being here, we'll move on to item C, Community Choice Aggregation. This is the Penfield Community Choice Aggregation Residence Committee. And so just by way of teeing this up a little bit, this has been some discussions that we've had and I'll just give a brief rundown. Back in November of 2018, the end of November, there was a presentation made to our Energy and Environmental Advisory Committee by the Penfield CC residents. In January, you know, we had that as an FYI on our agenda, but again, no further action was taken. We've had staff members doing some legwork as well as some of our committee members. On February 27, the Town Board had an overview by myself as it relates to where we are with this and I updated the Board on the February 27, 2019 meeting. On March 9, Al Hibner, who we're going to be hearing from here shortly, gave a presentation to the East Penfield Homewares Association where a number of the Board members, Paula, Linda, and I had attended. Al and I met March 18 and set up a time to come in for this evening for the work session to make a presentation to the Board as well as community because all of our meetings are in fact broadcast live on Penfield TV. So that's a brief tee-up. I'm going to move out of this chair. I'm going to turn the --
We don't want to blind you.
That's quite all right. I appreciate that, so I will move off to the side and I'll let you slide up another chair. Very good. Turn this on. Rob.
Copy.
Thank you.
Do you need another copy if I could?
Yes, I have another copy.
I was going to say, Andy, make sure that it gets in the air.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So let me start by saying I'm Al Hibner. I live at 85 Highledge Drive on --
Just a little ways up the hill from you.
And I am lead of the Penfield Community Choice Residence Committee. And I appreciate your inviting us here today to give you some more information about community choice aggregation. I just wanted to take a moment to kind of shout out to our committee members that are in the audience. If you want to raise your hands there. John Steeby, Ruth Marketti, we have both of the Correns, Chris Gabel. So we have most of our committee represented here tonight. And I also want to introduce you to our guest speakers, members of Rocktricity, Ben Freiber and Margie Pete will be here kind of riding shotgun to help answer questions. So that's our group tonight. And I saw this come across my desk and I just got to give you a shout-out. Six years it took to do this. And I so appreciate what we're doing here.
It's all right.
That this was turned on, commissioned, and verified and ready to rock and roll. And finally, the meter is spinning the right way?
The meter is spinning the right way.
We talked about that on the 18th and now you've got it spinning the right way. So this is something that I've actually sent a couple of copies of this to other municipalities in New York as I talk with them and hold you up as a role model. Kid you not, I think this is quite an accomplishment. So thank you for getting that online and getting that going and let's do more. Let's do more of this. With that, I just want to introduce Ben Freiber from Rocktricity and I'll let him take the control there.
Thank you, Al. As Al mentioned, I'm Ben Freiber. I'm with Rocktricity. And Rocktricity is an outgrowth of the Rochester People's Climate Coalition. So we were working on community choice aggregation there and saw a need to start a separate entity. So Rocktricity really is just focused on community choice aggregation. And I guess I'd like to start by echoing Al's sentiment about your solar project. That is really exciting. And he noted that that took quite some time to happen and it may be that it took long enough to happen that you don't know that I used to work for Larson Engineers when that project got started. So I had some involvement in some of the early stages of that project. So I'm particularly happy to see -- in fact, I'm on my way here tonight. I drove over there, passed it. And so I'm really happy to see that that's up and going. I know how many challenges there are with projects like that, so that's really exciting. That array of challenges can prevent homeowners and small businesses from doing the same kind of thing and enjoying those benefits of putting solar at their location. So one of the things I hope to do with the discussion about community choice aggregation is to pique your interest about how community solar projects can be integrated into community choice aggregation. So I'll touch on that a little further down the line. So what I want to talk about is explaining what community choice aggregation is. It sounds like you've already had some background on that, so we won't spend a lot of time on the details there. What the benefits are to the community. What organizations can implement CCA? How CCA works and what the steps that you need to go through to do that, to get to the point of implementing. But I've given this presentation or some variation of it quite a number of times and one thing I learned early on was not everybody is super tuned in to how we get our electricity and how to read their bill. And so I'm going to just take a step back for a minute and talk a little bit about a few of those things. So in this area, this is basically how our electricity is generated. Now this comes from the EPA and at that website, you plug in your ZIP code. So you might see a little bit different numbers from some other source and that's generally because they might draw the boundaries of where they're looking at a little bit differently. But for the ZIP code that I plugged in, and I tried several of them in the area, this is roughly what we're seeing. Thirty percent of the electricity that we consume is generated with fossil fuels. That's what we think we need to reduce. We need to try to find ways to diminish that and we think that community choice aggregation offers an avenue to do that. This is a sample electric bill and I want to point out just a couple of things. There's no reason to study this very closely except that you may not know when you look at your electric bill that there are delivery services and supply services. Delivery is really to get the electricity to your house. You don't have any choice about who does that. Wherever you live, your local utility is the entity that provides that service. That's managing all of the infrastructure that gets the electricity to your house or business. And then there's the supply services. This is for the electricity. You're paying for the electricity. If you don't make any choice about that, then you'll also pay your -- your utility will be your supplier as well. And you can see on this sample, I've highlighted, this is our RGNE supplier. But if you select an ESCO, then you would see a different name in there, an energy supply company. Another thing to note, it's not necessarily represented on this bill, but in upstate New York, we pay pretty low -- in this part of western New York, we pay pretty low supply rates. So where they have tried community choice aggregation in downstate, it's been a little easier to go because they're facing high utility rates. And so that it's a little bit more of a challenge here, but we think that we'll still be able to see savings and we'll be able to see savings on 100% renewablely generated electricity. So the generators generate the electricity. They put it onto the grid and the utility manages the grid and that's -- and then they get it to our homes and businesses. So this is what it looks like without CCA. And then we pay our bill. And I've put two lines there to represent supply and delivery. And of course, the delivery goes to the utility and then the utility remits the supply portion on up the line to energy brokers and the suppliers and to the generators. So these are both -- this shows both of those parts that I just talked about without CCA. I'm going to come back to this graphic in just a minute and show you what it looks like with CCA and how that changes just a little bit. So what is community choice aggregation? Well, this program was put in place by the Public Service Commission three years ago now. And it allows municipalities to aggregate the energy demand within their boundaries and then to use that aggregated demand to go into the marketplace and negotiate with those bulk -- a bulk purchase for better prices, potentially 100% renewable and other, you know, contract terms that benefit the community. All of the customers within the municipality's boundary are eligible to participate, but they're not all treated the same. It depends on meter classification. So residents and small businesses are automatically in the CCA program. However, other meter classifications, bigger businesses that use a lot of electricity and have a demand charge on their bill, they are not automatically in. But they can opt-in if they want to. We don't think that most of them will. It's not financially advantageous to them because of the structure of their bill. So coming back to this chart, without CCA, if we put CCA in place, what we think we'll see is the ability to shrink the traditional generation mix and move to a greater portion of it being renewably generated. It also introduces potentially additional suppliers and brokers, although these could be the same suppliers and brokers. It depends on how that bidding process goes. And you'll also see there's another entity there, a CCA administrator. And there is a small cost associated with that. That cost gets folded into the supply contract, so it doesn't show up on the bill. But this also is a very small cost. Currently, the administrators that are running these programs in the state are charging somewhere between eight and one-hundredths of a cent per kilowatt hour and a tenth of a cent per kilowatt hour. So that, in the context of things, that's really quite small. So a little bit more about the program. These programs can aggregate electric supply, gas supply, or both. We are very much advocating electric supply with the strategy toward 100% renewable. You can include energy efficiency and distributed energy resources like shared solar programs. And I touched on that just earlier about how we could get the benefits of a solar project to residents within a municipality that engages in community choice aggregation. So that's very much set up in the Public Service Commission's order. However, there are still some details that they're trying to work through. I mentioned that customers are automatically in the program. Residents and small businesses are enrolled on an opt-out basis. That means that they have to take action to get out of the program once you put it in place. However, we believe that that should be super easy for people to do and that they should be able to do it anytime in the course of the program as opposed to some initial period, that they should be able to do that at any time during the program and that it shouldn't cost them anything. There should be no penalty or fee if they decide that they want to opt out. And it can include customers that already have a supply contract with an ESCO. However, they're not treated with opt-out treatment. They're treated on an opt-in basis. So if they have an ESCO contract and they're getting a really good price or maybe they are already receiving electricity that's renewably generated and they like that, they can stay with that and they won't be -- they won't have to take any action at all. But if their contract terminates, expires, they can opt in if they want to. They aren't forced to, but they could opt in. So if they talk with their neighbors and they see those benefits, they might decide to opt in. And again, the program can choose to make 100% renewably generated electricity the default. So who can put this in place? Well, there are, as you know, there are four types of municipalities in New York State: counties, villages, towns, and cities. Counties can't do this, of course, because that would impact all of the people that are in the villages, towns, and cities. So it's been delegated down to villages, towns, and cities per the Public Service Commission's order. And the municipalities can aggregate further by working together, particularly if they're in the same utility service territory. But even if they're not, you can aggregate to go into the marketplace beyond with communities that are aggregated across those boundaries. You might not get the same price in both service territories, which you can aggregate and go to the market in that fashion. Putting the program in place requires that you pass local enabling legislation. So what are the benefits? Well, there's certainly the potential to reduce electric rates and that could apply to both the traditional mix and 100% renewablely generated electricity. And reducing the price volatility. This is important to many customers. Many customers struggle with that. You know, one month the price goes up, that can really be a hardship for many people. Having a flat rate can be really quite helpful. And again, I keep touching on this, you can accelerate the transition to renewablely generated electricity. And I think that part of the reason that the committee has been involved with this is that's a keen concern of theirs. And through the mechanism that I've already mentioned to create shared solar projects, this can generate some economic activity within the community and potentially some small number of yards. So how does this impact customers? Well, customers have their number of options available if you own a home and you're paying an electric bill. And so I want to quickly step through how I see some of those options and how it changes if you have CCA in place or if you don't. So first of all, you can choose to have your electricity supplied by the utility. Well, without CCA, you don't have to do anything, right? That's the default. That's just what -- you know, you call up and say you have the lights on. That's what you get. Your supply comes from the utility. If you put CCA in place, you can have that too. You simply opt out of the CCA. And again, the strategy is to make that quite easy for customers to do. Choosing an energy supply company. Let's say you want to -- currently, you want to get 100% renewablely generated electricity from a wind farm in Iowa or from in-state solar or whatever. You can go into the ESCO market and there are all kinds of options there. You can do that. It's quite easy. And in fact, they spend a lot of effort sending, putting things in the mail and calling people. So you may have already heard from them, right? And there's a strategy here to, you know, avoid that cost for them. If you go to them with a -- as CCA is planned, you go with them with a bulk purchase, they don't have to reach out to all those customers. That's really a key part of where the saving. With CCA in place, certainly they can -- if they want to choose a different ESCO than the CCA program chooses, they simply opt out and go shopping on the supply market. Enjoying the bulk buying benefits. Well, without CCA, not really. I mean, you could, I suppose, try to organize your neighbors and do that, but in order to gain critical mass there, it's going to be really challenging. That's really difficult. But with CCA, yes, absolutely. That's the whole point of the program is to make it so you can take that bulk purchase to the supply market and demand the terms in a contract that you want to see that benefits your community. So there's some flexibility in how these programs are administered. The municipality can administer the program themselves. We have yet to talk to a municipality that has any interest in doing that. Most municipalities have plenty on their plate and they think it's not interesting taking that up. But you can do that. You can have a third party administer that CCA program. That's the way most of these programs are headed. And there are several organizations that have some of the preliminary plans in place and approved by the Public Service Commission. I'll touch on that just a little bit more in a moment. And the costs associated with administering the program can be folded into the supply contract. So again, those don't show up as separate line items on people's bills and they're very small and they're paid by the ESCO. So the steps to put this in place. Let's say you're interested in it or you want to put this in place. The first step is to pass that local law, that enabling legislation that I mentioned. You're not committed to do anything beyond that. You could pass the local law and just stop doing anything. So that doesn't commit you to anything. It just allows you to continue forward in the process. Selecting an administrator, assuming that you don't want to do it yourself, you might go and look and select an administrator. And you may have noted that recently, the towns of Pittsburgh, Brighton, Aranquay, and the Village of Pittsburgh issued an RFP to do that very thing, to select an administrator. So they're in the middle of that process right now, selecting an administrator.
Are they doing it together?
Well, there are -- the RFP that they issued to do that was one RFP stating that they were all three on board, but that they may or may not select the same administrator. So they might see different things in the responses and go in different directions where they might all choose the same one. I think the benefits of working together, as I mentioned, if municipalities work together and aggregate further, they understand those things. So there's -- I would say probably they will, but we don't know for sure.
And I think I recall seeing that they were due to have their proposals in by early April and I was just curious where that might stand. I think they issued the RFP for the administrator in March and slated to have proposals by early April.
Yeah, that's a popular one. I don't remember the date. I want to say that the date in which they got the proposals got pushed back a little bit. Do you remember, Marty?
It was March 1st that they released the RFP and it was April 5th that their expenses were due.
April 5th, yeah. So they've had a little bit of time to look at it, but I think that RFP said that they would have 90 days before they -- so that 90 days, they will take some steps to get through that sort of process. Thank you. And I mentioned that there are some organizations that have some of the paperwork in place. This next step is to have an implementation plan and a data protection plan approved by the Public Service Commission. So the Public Service Commission knows that the program that's being proposed is following all the rules and they have a plan to treat the customers fairly and to tell customers what's going on and to inform them about how to opt out. So those plans are critical. And in selecting an administrator, it's probably, I would say, if there's one really important step there, it is go and look at these implementation plans so that you can see what the various administrators are proposing. So the Public Service Commission approves those plans and then you can start to collect the information from the utility so that you figure out how much electricity is there now. You can understand things about how many households are there and how much electricity is being used, but it's really aggregated data, so you can't -- you're not going to see at a detailed level. You're just seeing how much electricity we're talking about. And you can share that information with the ESCOs in order to begin to get an understanding of the pricing, whether or not they can meet the demand, if they're able to meet the 100% renewable requirements, all of the requirements that you might put into an RFP and subsequently a contract. The next step is to sign an agreement with your administrator. And what that agreement's designed to do is to -- because when formal bids come in, those bids aren't good for a very long period of time, generally for a day. So what this MOU does is it allows the administrator to execute the contract on your behalf. But of course, these bids have to be compliant, right? They have to meet the price requirements. They have to meet all of the requirements that you, the municipality, enter are included in that RFP. So that's a kind of a critical step. And it's important to note that up until this point, the municipality's not really committed, right? You're just exploring. You're just trying to find out, you know, is this going to work out well? What's the price going to look like? And up until this point, you're not committed. When you sign that MOU, then what you're saying is yes, if we get all of the conditions in the contract for the supply that we want, then we'll sign that contract. We'll execute that contract. So then the contract gets executed and there's a public outreach. Now that's a formal public outreach period that's in the Public Service Commission's order. It says, you know, you have to go through all these steps. But we very much envision that public outreach is going on throughout the process. You're telling the public what's happening. You're telling them that you're moving forward with CCA. You're considering it, how you're making it, implementing it, and that people will have the option to opt out. If they don't like something about it, they don't like the price, they don't like who you've selected as the ESCO, anything, they can opt out. So that information is important and we think it should be shared with the public throughout all along the way. There are some specific requirements about this public outreach step in the Public Service Commission's order, so you want to make sure that those specific requirements are being addressed as well. So there has been some activity in the area. This is not complete by any means and it's hard to keep this chart up to date because there is a fair bit of activity. I did put April 29, 2019 on there because I think I got it up to date. I did my best, but there is a lot of activity. I put this on the last minute because the Village of Victor just passed the local law. They're indicating that they're going to select an administrator very quickly without an RFP process. The three that you see up here that have selected administrator, they did not do an RFP process. I mentioned Brighton, Pittsburgh, and Aranquay and the Village of Victor. The town of Geneva, the town of Geneva is pursuing a shared solar project. So they're quite a ways down the track. They're just not big enough to get good pricing in the marketplace. And so what they've done is they've headed down this path with the help of their administrator to implement a shared solar project. So that has the potential to really not only save the customers quite a lot of money, but it has a financial benefit directly to the town. That's a pretty exciting strategy. City of Rochester, this is true of the city of Canandaigua also. These cities that are in RGNE territory, RGNE is interpreting a tax, one of the tax laws about grocery receipts tax, a little bit differently than the other utilities in the state. Well, actually RGNE and NICEG, of course, they're effectively the same, are interpreting this a little bit differently. And so the city has paused. They very much want to implement CCA and they want to pursue 100% renewable, but they have indicated to us. But they're on hold until they get that particular issue resolved. That was a fairly speedy and brief version of this presentation in the interest of time. But if you have any questions, I would be happy to do my very best to answer them.
Okay, Board, questions, comments either for Ben or for Al?
More slides. Oh, Al's got the more slides. I'm sorry.
So Al's got -- Al's got -- it's going to dry.
So to close up the presentation in conclusion, what we're asking you to do tonight, there are actually two things, short term and one's a little bit longer term in terms of goals. Basically, we're asking you to pass the local enabling legislation to get the formal process underway. And again, as Ben said, this is not a commitment. This is just an exploratory phase. Long term, our committee was formed on the basis that we really are interested in 100% renewable for electricity to really take us down that road to our renewable renewable world. So we're right here. This is what we're asking you to do as a result of tonight's presentation. We hope you will consider doing that and we absolutely thank you for your attention and time tonight and the presentation. Appreciate it so much. Thank you.
Can I make one more point?
Sure.
I forgot to mention this and I certainly should have. Rocktricity, this company, Rocktricity that I'm with, we have partnered with one of the administrator organizations, Jewel Assets. And we did that because that seemed to be a need in the area, that needed to be done. So full disclosure, I'm actually part of one of the organizations that's working to administer these programs. I thought it was important for you to hear that because it's true and there is a path there for Rocktricity to realize some trickle of income to keep our operations and efforts to promote community choice aggregation going forward.
Thank you all so much. And I'll get this out of the way.
One question, Al, as you're pulling that together. In that second to last slide, we talked about the regional status. The selected administrator, are all of those being represented by Jewel?
They are.
Okay.
They are. So if you get further from Rochester, there are others who would fall in that same status that didn't select Jewel. For instance, the -- For instance, the town of Naples, I'm pretty sure it's the town of Naples.
Canandaigua has something.
The town of Naples, which of course is around the southern end of Lake Canandaigua, selected MEGA. And I think you may know of MEGA, Municipal Electric and Gas Association in Illinois. They have provided, you know, electric supply, and I think gas supply for municipalities for quite some time.
And Ben, who, besides MEGA and Jewel, who are some of the others?
The one other one that has an approved implementation plan is Good Energy. And if you want a sort of a place to start to compare the three, we put together a table comparing the three organizations on a variety of aspects, and we would be happy to share that with you. We shared it with the other, all three of the administrator organizations, and they commented, and we made sure that the table represents their thoughts. So this isn't just simply my opinion on which one you should select, it is rather, you know, I view it as a fair representation of answering a few questions about the different administrators.
Okay. If you could do that, that'd be great, if you would send it to myself, or Al, to myself, I'll make sure that the board has that information. That would be a good comparison chart for us and David to look at.
Okay.
All right, we will do that. Great. All right, Al, thanks very much. Appreciate it. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. And we will carry this on future work session agendas. So there's many items to come on this agenda. You're welcome to stay, because it is a lot of stimulating conversation here at local government. And so if you have no other place to be and would like to spend some time with us, you're certainly welcome to do that. And again, Al, Ben, thank you very much, and then for your team members that are here as well. Okay, we will give 30 seconds for those that would like to move on to maybe some other items, and then we will continue on with our agenda. We had item B, Evan Shutt at 1068 Plank Road, Homestead area modification, and I still don't see Evan in the...
I texted through to get a contact. Unfortunately, he's not going to be able to make it tonight.
Okay.
Many apologies to the board not being able to make it, and I said I'd look to schedule him on your May 8 meeting, so we'll put him as a future agenda item.
All right, we'll look potentially forward to the May 8 agenda. Okay, with that, then we will move on to action items, and we have, first item is the Penfield Square Regional Pump Station Enforce Main acceptance, and I'll ask our friend, Mr. Valentine, if he would tee that up for the board.
I passed around just kind of a, this is my simplistic sketch of kind of what's going on. So we're looking at Route 250, the big building in the front is the YMCA, the current location. As we're moving ahead with mixed use, the Wickham property is the property just north of that, shows the orange line and the purple line there. As part of their development, they're looking for access to sanitary sewer. We've talked to them and discussed with them, rather than having them put in a private force main pump station individually, we'd like them to install at their cost a regional pump station that would service that area. So it creates service for the properties to the north, so that's kind of what that purple line is, is the gravity line that they would provide to the north, so the next person could tie in and connect in the pump station. The orange square is the pump station, and then the orange line is the force main that comes over and then ties into an existing sewer. We have an easement next to the church along Route 250. So the initial part of it is, anytime you put anything along a state right of way, as we've done at several other locations, we've had storm sewers or other sanitary sewers, the state DOT wants a letter from the town saying we will own and maintain that force main. So that's first and foremost with that. And then secondly, I thought it was apropos to talk about the pump station at the same time. We've asked them to size it to handle the sanitary, future sanitary flows on the west side in the future, install the pump station, the proper pumps according to that, as well as the force main with that. Behind me, I have engineered drawings, if you want to look at more detailed engineered drawing and put it up, but this was kind of my simple little graphic to that. Look over, this shows in more close detail, this is their development here, same pump station, here's the gravity line, Wickham's property, this is the YMCA's current access drive, the force main coming across, down in, and then this is the church property there. So this is their engineered drawing, I kind of just tried to put on...
Got it, so they are putting in the orange?
They're putting in the orange.
Okay.
So the force main is at their cost, the pump station is their cost, the gravity sewer is at their cost. Basically, they're looking at, once they install all this, we would take dedication of it. This pump station is sized to handle the flows for future development, this force main is sized to handle the future development. So all of that is at their initial cost. As other people come on, as we typically do, we'd have it on that gravity sewer to the next property, and kind of continue that on up. So they, you know, each person kind of does their piece and part of it. So it's kind of a two-part, one, obviously if the board accepts it, I need to provide a letter on your behalf to the state DOT saying we willingly accept this, it's in the right of way, we're going to maintain it. Obviously, we'll have crews on site to inspect it and make sure, nothing's installed to date as of yet. We'll make sure it's installed according to our specs, the pump stations to our standards, working with Seaworth on that, so it's going to be a Gorman Rupp station, which matches what we have on all their other stations. They are also installing a generator at their cost. We, you know, a full generator run the pump station, as we've been converting our other existing pump stations over to have generators on them, so we don't have to portable stuff with that.
It's good in concept, so just a couple of questions. I guess, what is the pump station then going to look like, based on, I mean, certainly because of the location? So I mean, if it's going to be sitting out there like a sore thumb...
It's something the planning board's looking at right now, is having screening around it. It will be a little bit of a building, so it'll look like a little kind of shed building.
Right.
So it's not just sitting on the ground, so it can include a little housing shed, but they're requiring some fencing around it, they're also requiring some landscaping around it, because it is a, as you said, it's right at kind of that corner hub.
Yeah.
They also want it to look nice as well, because it's kind of, they're going to have a little garden next to it as part of the memory care unit. So it's located right here, right on this future drive, they've got a little garden here as part of the memory care unit, so it's just off the end of that, this is the YMCA's here, so both their parties have interest in it looking nice and not just as a...
Is that the only spot, or is that the spot on the property that makes the most sense?
That's kind of a low spot.
That's a low spot?
That makes the sense, is to kind of, you can get the best future connection in the gravity, because as you know, 250 sits up, and when the property falls elevation to the back, so we've got to push it as far back in the property, so once off the road, you're not seeing it from 250. And as you enter the property, you know, it'll look like a utility shed. It'll be, you know, a block in that building.
So if you think about it for maybe not quite the same scale, but if you think about pump station, what we call 19, right there on 250, so if you're heading south...
Right at the town line?
Right at the town line.
That's pretty big.
Yeah.
This is not this...
I was going to say, from a scale standpoint...
Because that was my first thought, and...
It's going to be much smaller than that, but as far as the materials, it's kind of looking like another little building right there. It's not going to look like a pump sitting on the ground.
Well, it's in a little development, yeah.
It's in a development, and they're going to, you know, the planning board's...
Is the Y tying into this?
The Y is not.
Okay.
The Y drains the other direction.
Okay.
You can see, theirs is actually the red line on here.
Right, I saw that, so...
Theirs comes out the back, and it pumps into Country Club East. There is restrictions in the Country Club East pump station downstream from this, and that's actually the Y, the YMCA has storage tanks on their property. Because if they ever backwash the swimming pool, it would bury our system. So they have to time and pump on off hours for the pool, or meter out, just because our downstream pump station can handle normal toilet shower sinks, but, you know, if they ever backwash the pool, 50,000 gallons, whatever it is, you know, our pump station couldn't handle it. So we've got measures in place with them, and I've never had an issue with them.
That's truly the Royal Flush.
Yeah. So the other question I have then is, is there any concern, or is there precedent in town elsewhere where you have this right of way with this kind of utility when it's a private road?
We do have, they would put an easement over the top of it, so we'd have the right of it over that easement.
Right.
You know, for access and maintenance over that, we have that in many other locations on private property and public property, but we've got a public utility running through private property. The rest of it, you know, I showed it off the right of way, but that was just for clarity sake.
Okay.
And if you recall, I think Mark touched on it, but if you recall, anything that is put within the state right of way, they expect us to take care of it. So if, for instance, typically what we see are maybe catch spaces or some type of drainage structures that we have, and when those go in, typically what we do is the Town Board resolution essentially authorizes, authorizes me to sign the proper documentation with the state in New York that says, okay, this, in this area, that's ours, but it's in your right of way, they give us the permission, and if there's problems or issues, you know, we're on the hook for all the repairs and anything else, cleanup, any of those types of things. Fair statement, Mr. Valentine?
Correct.
All right.
Sounds reasonable.
I don't have any concerns based on that presentation.
Okay, all right. We'll prepare a resolution, so that we have that, yep. So, seeing no further discussion, we'll ask Mr. Valentine to move forward with the resolution for Town Board.
She moved that second.
I'll move that we accept the request for the regional pump station and force main acceptance.
All right. All right, it's been moved and seconded, seeing no further conversation. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, very good, thank you for that. Mark, thank you for that tee-up. Let's move on to item B, 1725 Scrivener Road, request for sidewalk waiver. Mr. Valentine, again.
We have another visual aid for this one. So this is a project that the board is familiar with. This originally came before the board for transfer development rights. They've obviously not gone with that, the board wasn't supportive of that, they've gone back to the planning board for a conventional plan layout. So this is across the street, here is the middle school, Scrivener Road, they've come back to a conventional layout, did their conventional layout, now they're showing a cluster where basically they want to do a one-sided road, preserve majority of the property to be undeveloped, and as part of that, they're asking for a sidewalk waiver. So I've kind of highlighted in green, you know, our normal requirement west of the Quinn Line has to come to the Town Board, is frontage, and then both sides internal. One thing they're working with the planning board is, the planning board was supportive of, was doing the one side internal, the frontage, and then in lieu of doing, some of the internal was making a connection back to the cross on Scrivener Road. So Scrivener Road comes down, they've got sidewalks on that east side of the road, and then comes to that angle point, and then gaps to here. Made a lot of sense for this development, and even for neighbors here, if they can get that much closer, if there's children in here, or children in here, could walk out, walk that little additional gap, and then get to a crosswalk.
Where's the, is the flashing light right now at the end of the blue?
It's right here.
Okay. And it crosses sort of diagonal to that?
It's kind of got an angled crossing to it, so this one extends that piece to this neighborhood here, and then tie that back in.
So just out of curiosity, is there, if we're making it a little bit more of a 90-degree, like an easier access point there from the sidewalk, is there any consideration to moving the flashing?
I mean, we could look at that and then see if squaring that up, you know, made sense, well...
I mean, I would say while you're out there...
Going further south.
Yeah, I mean, going further south, getting away, because right now, if my memory serves, you're kind of crossing into the very north end, or north end of the parking lot. So if we're extending the sidewalk down to where it may makes more sense, you cross straight into another sidewalk going in, yeah, while you're out there.
What would have to be done, there's a curved area this is... This is their driveway here, and I guess I'm not familiar enough to know what's directly across and is, but...
Just a suggestion, it may not be feasible, but...
Talk with the school district about while we're looking at it. Obviously, it wasn't feasible before they came to here and just kind of stubbed it and brought it across. You know, but this little connection here, in lieu of, you know, internal, made sense that the planning board and the developer, you know, was supportive of making that trade to do that.
Because that is kind of a, when you have cars sort of waiting in the queue to turn out, it's kind of like a hidden, the east side of that street's like a hidden crosswalk. I mean, you really, you can see that, it's flashing, of course, but they're kind of tucked there between the trees and the cars, and so any way, any way to kind of just open that up, so. All right. I'm okay with the waiver of the one side inside, yeah. No problem with that.
I ran it through the formula that the board adopted in the past, to make sure he's paying his fair share, you know, he's above that, you know, with his head at peace.
That'd be good, yeah. A little bit, we accept the request.
Okay, moved and seconded, further discussion. Okay, seeing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. And so, we'll pursue that, and then you will at least explore that crosswalk to see if it, you know, makes, you know, any logical sense. Obviously, we'll want to make sure the school district is part of that conversation. All right, thank you, Mark. We will move on to item C. Item C is the item that was added to the agenda after it was originally published last Friday. This is for green light fiber underground installation approval process. So let me take just a moment to do a brief tee-up of this, and then I'll turn it over to Mark more from a technical standpoint. So, I think all the board members have had some inquiries as it relates to green light or having access to green light.
I'll put a three-step...
Oh, that's perfect, okay. So I'll look on, I'll look on with, I'll look on with, nope, stay right there, and Paul and I will share. And so, anyways, there has certainly been some interest as it relates to green light. For the most part, green light has gone into areas where there has been overhead, the overhead wires, poles, and what have you. And so a lot of, there's a lot of older communities that have predominantly overhead, and it makes it, makes it pretty easy to get in and provide service. They also, they also take a look at those areas where they're getting some large numbers. So if a neighborhood is 15 homes, even though there might be overhead wires, poles, and wires, that may not be a top priority for them to go, because they're looking for that volume, and that's certainly understandable. In Penfield, we have, a lot of our subdivisions are underground, and so up until recently, green light has not done a lot with the underground. They've tried a couple of small locations here and there, but really, that had not been their major business plan. Now I think they're getting a lot of requests, and so they're going to different municipalities looking to put in underground. And so one of the things that typically municipalities will do is that when it's in rights of way, you look for the mapping, so that you understand which is in your right of way, make sure there's minimal conflicts between storms, sanitary, water, gas, electric, et cetera. And so, they have provided some mapping for us, and I asked Mark if he would put this on the agenda for review and discussion by the board, to get a sense of where the board is, and, you know, from a mapping standpoint, I think this board wants to be reasonable for utilities that provide services to our residents. However, we also want to make sure we're being reasonable, so that we just don't have a spaghetti mess as we have emergencies with water main breaks, sewer-related issues, gas, electric, that we're also being sensitive to digging and digging things up and what have you. So I think that, I'll leave it right there, Mark. I think what I'll let you do is maybe kind of give us a sense of some of the requests that you've had, and kind of start a conversation about where do we go from here.
Sure. So we've hit some meetings with green light, they came into PRC and talked about areas they wanted to go into. We shared with them, you know, we would need mapping ahead of time to review, is similar to what we do with RGNE and other utilities. Typically, they provide us mapping, we review it in-house, go through PRC, share it with
Typically, they provide us mapping, we review it in-house, go through PRC, share it with the EPW, make sure there's no conflicts with our utilities or any others in the area, you know, and then, you know, issue a, basically a highway work permit to work within our right-of-way. Had the conversation with, with Greenlight, they went away, they came back with, basically, this was the first set of plans, and this is going to tibby it up of what they provided back, which kind of shows a concept of where they want to be, but it didn't provide us any information on what utilities are out there, where are the property lines, where is the gas mains, water mains, trees, et cetera. So I pushed back a little bit and said, you know, no, we need more mapping. You know, we usually get kind of an ASBelt of what's in the existing area. So they provided, and came back last week with colored plans that you have here. So it overlays on an aerial, shows a little bit more detail of where they're putting hand holds and everything else. But again, doesn't show what existing utilities are out there. So, I mean, I sent them, I said, this is, and here's a packet of information of what we typically get from RGE. So RGE typically does more of an ASBelt of trees that are out there, other utilities, what else is in the area for conflict. Greenlight, as the supervisor shared, I think has done more aerial stuff. They've gone into new neighborhoods, and we have them in Silverwoods, and they went in with the initial construction, so you know what's out there, you know what's laying. This is kind of new for us, to be done this way. You know, they asked, well, what have Frontier provided, what has, you know, what have we gotten from Time Warner Cable, other telecom communication groups? I, in my memory, I said, I can't remember a time that they've gone into a neighborhood after it was developed. Typically, it goes in with the initial construction, you know where the utilities are, staked out, they've got their own trench. So that's why it's become kind of a unique opportunity. I've asked them for more, they said, you know, if we have to provide that, well, I have to go back and do survey, but we're going to pull out of Penfield for now. They have this slated to do in May or June, they've got the drilling crew set up, but they said if you want more from us, you know, we're going to have to pull out, so.
Just for this area? This is all, like, when you say they have to pull out of Penfield for now...
This is the only areas they're proposing in Penfield right now, so they're not proposing any other areas. This is kind of the first.
And that's newer.
Retro development to go in.
This is a newer one, this isn't...
This is Cranberry Cove neighborhood, this goes into...
But they're underground.
I assume utilities are underground, I can't even tell.
There is no, everything is underground in this neighborhood.
Why don't they come and do my neighborhood, Rob, Tony, or Paula, we all have overhead, you know, it's all...
Where's the...
The older one.
Can I see that for a second?
Did they say why?
They all have enough people.
I got it. There you go, Rob.
So I shared that with them, and said, this is what we typically get from RGE. They hire an engineering company, they've got a little bit on that. They show an, you know, ASBelt of what's out there, where the roads are, you know, the other property lines, and just so we can understand what's out there and what's going in.
But are they saying this newer area, there's more people?
They must have enough demand in this neighborhood.
In the older section.
There must be enough demand in this neighborhood.
The way it works is they solicit Greenlight as a group, and the more people that are willing to pay the initial fee for engineering review, that type of thing, they're the ones that get picked up first. So you might have, every neighborhood in town wants it.
But they also, they're piggybacking off of Webster.
That's probably true.
Most of Penfield is in no man's land.
Yeah.
They've been moving up State Road, they've been looking at the Villas, if you see them, they've been looking at some...
They're just piggybacking, but basically between State Road and the parents in East Rochester, Penfield, I mean, there's nothing, there's no infrastructure. So that's why they're where they are.
Yeah.
So I, I mean, there's a big difference between this.
And Google map.
And this.
That's...
So I guess my question is not really understanding, I mean, I know of Greenlight, I think we all have people here, or friends, relatives, who have it, speak very highly of it. All I hear about is how wonderful it is. Do they have the technical expertise to do something like this?
Not in-house.
Okay.
So they would have to hire someone to do that, but if that's what we want to require, that's what we require, and they'll conform with it, but it's just going to take them...
That's what we require of other utilities and other, you know, cable companies, then what makes it different that they shouldn't be?
I think they're coming out that this is telecommunications, and telecommunications works a little bit differently, but as I said, if we don't have any history with Time Warner, I don't have any history with Frontier, to say, once the neighborhood's built, they go in, they're under initial construction. I, my experience, I've never had, then Time Warner can say, hey, we want to go into, you know, Newberry Park, and let's start drilling and running new lines. You know, I'm not aware of that, so we haven't established a process to that.
Well, if they, if they were to move forward on these kind of schematics, what recourse, I mean, we don't really have a sense of the specifics. So what recourse does the town have? What liability can we hold them to if they come in and, oh yeah, well, we're kind of on the blue dot here, and maybe not, and, oh, we just cut off water for 75 homes? I mean...
That's the concern that I came from. The Water 30 has had concerns. I reached out to some other communities and said, okay, what have you guys experienced? I called Perrington, and they haven't had it yet, as you said, there's nobody over there. I called, talked to Brighton today. Brighton said, you know, most of their stuff is older neighborhoods, is overhead lines, they haven't really had an issue with it. I talked to the town of Grease, they went ahead with it, they said they've had a little bit of issues. It's been some handholding, they've had issues with water main, they've directionally drilled over top of the water main.
Probably their newer areas of Grease.
And now, how does the Water Authority get down to their main?
Yeah.
You know, whether it was a field issue or not, you know, now the Water Authority has to hand dig to get down to their water mains. So basically, they said, you know, we'll call for stakeout, saying we're ready to dig, the utilities will come out and stake out, they're utilities, we'll find the best line, and then we'll directionally drill in there. They'll expect, accept responsibility for any damage they cause as they're drilling in. My concern as the after is how do we know exactly where they went? Are they over the top of our storm sewer, sanitary sewer?
And when there's a problem with another utility, what is the effect on there?
Future, you get a water main break at 3:00 a.m., and they're digging through, and they got to dig up the main to patch it.
Do they all have to come out?
They may hit fiber.
To look at it? Do they all have to come out?
Well, they come out and, they'll call in a stakeout. So you call in the 811 number, and they come out, everybody picks the flags out and spray, spray paint and everything else, so it's, you know, it's a stakeout.
So they do that anyway, you always see that.
Can you imagine?
But they put the flags out there, and then they'll decide this is the best route to go, and then, I mean, they hire Borough Brothers and known entities, they're good drilling companies, and then they would drill the line in. But, you know, typically, we just have more design on the front end to know what's in that, that right-of-way. We've met recently with Verizon, I think Verizon's going to be coming out with, they want to do 5G, so they're going to have fiber in right-of-ways. If Verizon's doing it, I'm sure AT&amp;T will do it. I just have a little concern, as these neighborhoods get filled up with, you know, running additional fiber lines, you know, we kind of need to have a plan of where do they go, and...
Especially as demand increases.
They're going to get, so, just being very sensitive, I know Greenlight's very popular, I know there's a lot of demand for it. If I continue to press them for more detailed plans, they're going to pull out, and we may get some backlash from, you know, residents in the community saying, hey, why is Penfield being so tough on, on Greenlight? If, you know, if it was Greenlight or Verizon or anybody else, I just want to make sure we've got a...
Make them think there's some sort of resolution.
A process and a plan in place to make sure that...
Well, that's what I was going to ask. Is there, is there a middle, is there a middle ground that at least would provide a little more comfort from your perspective?
Something in between those.
Is there no middle ground?
Well, even if they just did ASBelt, Energy needed to kind of do both sides of the road all the way down the whole right-of-way.
Yeah.
Even if they just did the one side of the road that they intend to be on, I mean, they got to do some survey work to identify what's out there.
I see that, Rob.
You know, I don't really care what's...
We have, we have ASBelt maps for the subdivision, the newer subdivisions.
And we can provide them...
Could that assist them?
We can provide them whatever mapping we have to do some checksey with it, and if they could overlay their stuff on, you know, existing mapping that we have. I'd just like to see how that fits in.
Is that something that we could provide them, to assist them? Is it appropriate to do that?
I mean, all the materials, all the materials we have are all available. I mean, it's not like we have a...
And they don't know to look for those there?
I just think, you know, up to this point, I think everybody's so excited about Greenlight coming, they've just kind of gone into neighborhoods and, and...
Without the infrastructure background.
Other communities, they've been okay with this, and, you know, some areas it's worked out, and I think when it's on overhead lines, it's not an issue.
Yeah, yeah.
That's, that's simple. Once you start drilling underground, you don't quite know what you're going to run into, and so, so that's why I just wanted to...
This Google, Google map that they create really tells us nothing about the underground. It's a, it's a map, a Google Earth map that they call a fiber map, but it, correct me if I'm wrong, it looks like they just took the Google map and said, where, who are the people that have signed up? And they're the blue dots.
I think they're showing, they show a connection for everybody, whether you sign up or not, they would run it, and then they show...
I could have done that, Mark.
They run enough fiber lines out there.
And then, yeah, and then they just drew and...
I could have done the exact same thing.
Yeah.
They're showing their infrastructure, I just don't know what else is out there.
Lines.
I can look up...
Like, here's where the line, line will be.
And that's their line. I mean, I can look up on it, we've got it.
You'd have to get our map to get all the other stuff.
ASBelt of our storm and sanitary.
Yeah.
I don't know where RGE is.
Yeah, I mean, this is not, this is not done to...
I don't know where Time Warner Cable is. I don't know where...
You don't measure that.
We don't, I don't have any information, so. We have, we know where the water port is, but RGE, especially being gas and electric, you know, with a lot of concerns about terrorism and other stuff, they don't make that information public. So I don't know exactly, yes, I know approximately where it is, but I don't have an ASBelt map of where, where RGE's gas main is. So they got to stake that out.
Town pretty much just has the...
We know where our information is, and then the Water 30.
Show them, you mean, to trust it.
Well, I mean, if you don't understand where the RGE is, and anybody else comes with it, whether it's Greenlight or something else, it's always going to be an issue if you don't know where RGE is, so.
Well, that's why they would have, they'd have to contact RGE, and they would have to stake it out, and generate a map for it.
So you think they would, if they keep it all so secret, RGE?
They have to, they have to. They would come stake it out for that.
They would.
They just don't say, hey, here's our maps, and here's where main gas mains are.
Right.
They have to identify it, if you call them, they would identify it in the field.
So maybe maybe that's, you get a little group together, you talk with RGE, and Greenlight, and the town, and...
It's just going to, it's going to be a delay for them. We come back and say, here's a compromise, we need more mapping, we need more information.
Because it's only going to help them as they roll out their product.
You bring up a good point there, I suppose segue for a second. So, I mean, we're looking at this one neighborhood with like 70 homes or 50 homes, but do they have more of a mapped-out plan of attack for Penfield? Or is it basically one neighborhood, and then that's it?
I think they do them one at a time, actually.
Right, but...
They have not shared it with us. I know if you go on their website, they show percentages of which neighborhoods have, they classify them neighborhoods, and as you sign up online, they'll say your neighborhood's at 43% of what their required signup fee, and I don't, it's not 100%, but what do they want, 50% of the neighborhood, 75% of the neighborhood, I don't know what that tipping point is, but they'll show a percentage you're at 100% of where a neighborhood has signed up, therefore will now proceed with...
So you're not under the impression that Greenlight has four, five, six, 10, 15 different maps sitting around, but because the town of Penfield requires what they consider to be onerous, you know, guidelines that it's stalling many, many projects?
These are the only ones that I know about right now. So they were originally planning on getting the drilling ready, I believe, for May.
Right.
If we ask them for more mapping, some more information, obviously, they're going to have to hire surveyors to go out and do that. You know, that may put them off till later in the summer, the fall, you know, some other point in time, I don't know what their schedule is.
Have they reached out to, do you know if they reached out to RGE to do a stakeout for this May drilling?
No, their intent is they would call in stakeout before, once the driller shows up on site, they call in stakeout, they put flags in the field, they spray paint the ground, and then the driller figures out where the best spot to go is, and then they would give us an ASBelt of basically, once it's in the ground.
But it sounds like they should contact RGE first before they go doing that, otherwise they might hit something that's inappropriate.
Yeah, RGE is just one of many. They have to stake out every utility out there before they start.
Different color.
Just fiber optics and all sorts of other things out.
I'd say the only utility I've heard from so far is the Water 30. And the Water 30, you know, has had some issues where they've put fiber over top of their main. Typically, you want to put utilities parallel to each other horizontally, not vertically, so you can't...
So is the, is the concern, because if it's staked out, I guess I don't understand this well enough, but if it's staked out, then they would still go in and kind of just throw it wherever? Or if it's staked out, they have to be more mindful of the utilities already there?
Go around where the flags are.
Yeah, I'm just trying to, I mean...
With the spaghetti.
Well, it's twofold, it's...
Or is it because they're only asking to stake out the east side of the street, when clearly the west side of the street makes more sense, but they don't even know that because they hadn't...
They're only going to go down a certain distance. They don't have to go down very deep, but they have to go down...
30 inches down.
30 inches, so.
Isn't it, isn't it in their best interest, I mean, if I'm Greenlight, isn't it in their best interest to know where they're going to be digging, because not only for problems in installation, but maintenance?
You would think. The other part of that, too, is the initial drilling process. You want to know where everything is before you start drilling things.
Safety, too.
Wasn't that staked out?
Or is just where the right-of-way, so they don't know where they're...
It shows a flag and a striped line saying, there's something here.
Got it.
We don't know if our knowledge is.
Got it, okay, thank you, thank you.
So they'd be sending their workers in with this, and some flags, and saying, go dig.
And that's what they've, they've done in other communities, and they proceeded at that. You know, I just had a little bit of concern with it, obviously.
Which is why they probably had some problems in some...
Sure, with the supervisor of it, but I just want to bring it to the board, it is going to cause delays. We made it back from residents saying, hey, they told me I'd be up in operation by July 1st, and, you know, it may as cause some delays. We're not anti-Greenlight, we're not anti...
What's the last, I guess, what's the last dialogue that your office has had with someone at, at Greenlight, or perhaps...
Sounds like if PRC was the last face-to-face...
Face-to-face, I had conversations, used to share with them yesterday. They say, we got it as a new business item, just because it's timely, you know, we want to make sure we're not delaying them. If we're asking for more information, it will be. If we said we're okay with this, I didn't want to hold them up, so I spoke to them yesterday and just said, this is kind of where we're at, this is what I'm going to put to the board, you're welcome to be in the audience, watch on TV, I'll update you later on. I asked, you know, have them follow our conversation to say, this is, I'm making sure the Town Board is comfortable with how we're going to proceed, and this will set the path forward for them and any other, you know, group that comes in, of what level of detail we want to see before we...
Have we, have we had any other group knocking at the door at this point, at least raising the question or talking about possible additional underground?
Verizon was the other one that, that they are talking about the 5G, that we'd be more of a, kind of like a utility pole height rather than a cell tower, but then they need to run fiber between those utility poles or light pole to the next one, to the next one, so.
So, so, so if, so let me just, let me just take a minute and, and just make sure[1603.07] make sure we all understand what Mark just said. So, they're looking to put these poles in, um, so if you think about Newberry Park, uh, Newberry Park, uh, has no poles in that subdivision, everything's underground, uh, they potentially could go in and put in some number of poles, let's just for discussion purpose say they've gotta put in five poles, uh, they're gonna have to go to five different locations, it's gonna be in the right-of-way, so they're gonna be looking for a permit for us, but they're gonna be putting poles in front of five houses, uh, or on the property line of, uh, you know, so you could, you're gonna impact, and then they're going to run fiber from pole to pole to pole, and then take it out to either their main line, which might be on Atlantic Avenue or Jackson Road. So, uh, that's the, that's the, not, not that I wanna get bogged down tonight on that, but just keep that in mind, that's the next piece.
That's the statement we're setting for the next step. What we passed resolution for, for our town attorney to work on?
Yes, to, to work on the, the wireless component and to work with Cohen Law Firm out of Pennsylvania, yeah, yeah, so as we, as we go through, and take a look at our current ordinance. What I, what I might, what I might suggest for, uh, tonight, um, is that maybe it would be good for, uh, myself, um, and staff, uh, to sit down with, uh, some representatives of, uh, Green Light and, uh, to have some conversation, give me an opportunity, you know, if, if in fact they have not, you know, seen this or privy to, to this, to at least raise, uh, to them, you know, some of the concerns that the board has, and then, um, talk about what are, you know, what are some of the, uh, options and, uh, what might we be able to do, you know, for the best interest of, of everybody, because, uh, we've, we've gotta make sure that during, during emergency, uh, situations, and I'll just use a water main break, water main break, and that takes out, uh, a neighborhood, folks want their water on, as we know, uh, in a relatively, uh, short order, um, and, uh, if we have to start digging, you know, we run the risk of making, you know, if we don't know where all this stuff is, uh, do we dig up lines, and then whose responsibility to fix it, and then, once the water's on and I can take a shower, the first thing I wanna, wanna do is I wanna hop online and, uh, check out what's going on in my email, Facebook and what have you, so, once my water's on, I'm cool, but now my, uh, you know.
Green Light doesn't.
My, my Green Light doesn't work, and, uh, so then I'm hopping mad about that, so.
And the last person, last thing we saw in our neighborhood was the town digging, or, or the water?
Or, or, yeah, so, so if, uh, if the board is supportive, what I might ask, um, Mark and, uh, company to do is, uh, to see if we could, uh, get a, a sit-down here, uh, later this week or early next week, and, uh, maybe, uh, try to come to, you know, some, some reasonable middle ground, uh, that, uh, takes into account what we're trying to accomplish, but also, uh, it isn't, it isn't so, you know, nebulous that, uh, we run, run the risk of having other, other problems, so, and then give us an opportunity to report back, so if that.
I agree with that suggestion.
If that's, if that's okay, so we'll, we'll show that as a held, and Mark, I would ask, uh, you know, certainly I will do what I can to make sure that, um, you know, my, my calendar is such that I can meet and, so that we don't delay, uh, that we do this more in a timely fashion.
Thanks, Mark.
All right, so we'll show that as a held, and then, and Mark, thank you for making sure that, uh, we got this before the board for discussion. Okay, we'll move on to informational items, and, uh, we've got two items, uh, the first one, uh, uh, we have, uh, Jody Toonison, uh, this is a discussion of, uh, C B D Depot, uh, at twenty-one fifty five-mile line, excuse me, on Fairport Nine Mile Point Road, and we also have, uh, one as it relates, uh, to twenty-one, uh, eighteen five-mile line road, so, uh, might be an opportunity to, uh, have, have some discussion, because there's gonna probably be similarities of both, and if both parties are in-house, I, I might invite, uh, Jody and, uh, also Bill or William, uh, up, uh, up to the table, so, welcome.
Hi.
Good evening.
I didn't know, I thought there were only five, so I brought five sample bags.
Here's five board members.
Five, okay.
Five.
You can't accept. Oh, you can't?
No.
Okay, no, I'm sorry.
Mad, mad, mad.
All right, good intentions.
Mad, good intentions, thank you for the thought.
We're not being in pain anyways.
I won't.
There you go, so, so Jim, if, if you would, and again, because recognizing different locations, recognizing there may be some different, um, you know, business models for each, but, uh, because the topic is similar, maybe you would do a, um, kind of an overview for the board at a high level, and then we can delve into more specifics.
I would be happy to, thanks, Tony. Um, a while back, both Bill and Jody came to me and asked if they could make applications to the board, uh, to allow C B D shops, and, um, at that point in time, we didn't know very much about C B D shops, I've learned way more than I ever thought I would in the last several months, but, in any event, we thought it might be appropriate, and especially talking to the board, because the board probably didn't know much about it either, if we actually brought you in to talk to the board about your, your very, you know, proposals and the businesses that you'd like to operate, and I'll give you the specifics of that in a minute, and then, in that process, the board did allow me to, uh, advertise for a public hearing for each of you, which we're going to hold on May first at seven o'clock. Jody came to me first, actually, and was interested in opening up, uh, C B D shop at twenty-one fifty, twenty-one fifty, uh, Fairport Nine Mile Point Road, which if you remember, is the vacant space that, uh, Mr. Chen was going to place his, uh, Cambodian restaurant in, and he's decided not to do that at this point in time, so that's the one vacant space.
He's still the owner of that.
He is the owner, yes.
Of the property, but, uh, he's not gonna put his restaurant in.
He did write a nice letter supporting her efforts to come to the board.
Okay.
And make the application. Uh, shortly after that, I met Bill, Bill's a resident of Penfield and has been for some time, he came to me and he would like to take over the spot that is next to Divine Hair and Olga Boychek's building over in the corner of Five Mile Line Road and, uh, Penfield Road, and, um, he submitted his materials to me, again, he made his application, so both of them will be coming into the board, uh, on the first, board recognizing that they'd like to have some more information about the business and learn more about the business before you got to the meeting, uh, sometimes public hearings are real intense 'cause you're standing up there shaking, not knowing what you're gonna do, but it's a little more relaxed situation here, and I thought it'd be a good idea, based on the board's comments, to bring you both in and just kinda give them just an idea of what you do now, what your intent is for the, uh, both sites, and, uh, we'll get you home as quickly as possible.
Sure.
Since, uh, you came first, I'll.
You got it, first I'd like to tell you, I am going to be celebrating my one-year anniversary in my Greece location, and I'd invite you all to come down and, and tour the store, not that it's very big, but just take a look, sit there, you know, and if you, if at all you had questions, um, I don't know what your plan is, but I have a boutique style store, it's very welcoming, warm, comfortable, um, provide a safe atmosphere, a lot of people come in and tell us a lot of very personal things about themselves, so we provide a very personal, comfortable atmosphere, um, the odd thing about our business is that there is no key demographic, um, we see people that want help with their children, all the way to the very elderly, um, I love what I do, and I, I work, I'm very much a part of the community in Greece, and I'd also like to become much a, a part of Penfield as well, um, I'm involved in, I actually am voted Small Business of the Year for two thousand nineteen in Greece, so.
Congratulations, congratulations.
Thank you very much, we don't get the results until July, but I'm hopeful.
Can you talk a little bit about, uh, the products you're gonna provide?
Sure, the products are hemp-derived, um, cannabis, and it is, I, we have well over a hundred products in the store, uh, mainstay of what we sell is in category of smokeables, which come in many different forms, um, we do oils or tinctures, which are sublingual application, we do edibles, which is, um, gummies, candies, coffees, teas, um, in some cases, some cookies, we also do, uh, pills or capsules, and then topless, we have a pet line.
When you say smokeables, is it like vape?
Yes.
Okay, 'cause I see, I, you know, you hear, I mean, these shops are on the radio constantly, and you hear them advertise as vape shop sometimes?
We are not a vape shop, absolutely not, even close.
But they're so.
Yes, absolutely, yep, not a smoke shop, not a vape shop, we won't be carrying any apparatuses to smoke out of or anything like that.
It's just what you would put in it.
Put in, exactly.
Your hours of operation, I, I don't wanna turn this to a public hearing.
You're okay, my hours of operation are Monday through Friday from ten to seven, and Saturday eleven to seven, we are a family-owned and operated business, so we will be closed on Sunday.
Do, how, how many people would work there, a couple?
Well, yeah, we have, I have, uh, I have my two sons and my husband who work closely with me, and then I have two nieces as well, so.
That really is.
Okay, how, how are you licensed, I guess for both of you, is it for, through the New York, uh, New York State Department of Health, or do you need a county permit, or how, how does it?
I don't know about you.
What's the governing?
I was one of the first in, in, actually, New York State when I opened, and I didn't require anything like that, I did sit down with the federal marshal of, from Monroe County and talked to him and let him know what I was going to be doing, actually Greece pretty much required that, so, um.
But there's no.
This isn't medical marijuana?
Yeah, there's no. It is not, it is not.
There's no T H C, so it's kinda regulated.
It's from the hemp plant.
It's from the hemp.
See, that's what I got educated about, the hemp plant, because I was concerned, you know, because.
Yeah.
It hasn't been approved by the.
The FDA, they're working on that, actually, I mean, that may change very, very quickly.
But I was talking, I was talking to one of the salons, I was talking to one of the, um, stylists, and he was telling me how they get their product from a place in Henrietta, and that they send all these C B D products to the salons, for lotions and stuff like that.
Right, right, yeah, I don't do that, I mean, I'm direct buy, so it would be just, you know, just consumers, and a lot of the reason I actually looked at Penfield and I told Jim, a lot of my customers are from out here, and actually scoped out locations for me.
That's nice.
How old does, um, a customer have to be to purchase?
To purchase, twenty-one.
Okay.
So there is some form of governing body somewhere, I mean, I, I find it hard to believe you can open up.
They actually, New York State requires it.
You know, New York State, I mean, okay.
New York State does not even require a minimum age, actually, believe it or not, because, no, it's actually industry, industry standard, some states allow it at eighteen, I, I just keep it safe at twenty-one's, yes.
But you'd have to be twenty-one to go and wear?
At what, no, I don't think so, but.
So, Jody, um, is there, is there a difference, uh, between the product that I get at, maybe a Wegmans or a Rite Aid or a C V S, and, uh, what I might get at your shop?
Yes and no, C V S is gonna carry topicals only.
Okay.
So, and that's as of right now, I actually am working with one of the companies who's providing their C B D to C V S, uh, Wegmans is going to be carrying, uh, Charlotte's Web, which is a manufacturer of C B D oil, and they're carrying that one brand of oil, actually that has trace amounts of the T H C, it's point zero zero three, which is a legal amount, um, but in essence, no, I mean, the diff, the big difference would be.
The variety.
The variety and the education, you know, where you go into a Wegmans, the employees there, ninety percent of them will be able to explain what you're purchasing, you know, what the people are purchasing.
I'm still looking for the peanut butter aisle.
There's an apple.
Okay, yeah, I gotta bring my granddaughter some of that, okay, all right, very good, very good. Bill?
This came about, uh, in the genesis of a personal experience in that yours truly is mother-in-law lived with him for three years with, uh, the buildup of Alzheimer's, and all of the doctors wanted to do was just medicate the hell out of her, and horrified all of us, um, and my youngest son, who actually was the stimulus for this, who's gonna graduate from American University in three weeks.
Congratulations.
Said there had to be another way to deal with this, and we didn't have the info at the time, but it, it's been there since the Aztec Indians have been around, that this is a pain reliever that works on the receptors in the brain, that doesn't cause mood swings or anything like that, and it's non-devilitating, and it's not addictive, but it does work, and if we had that, Mom would've been a whole lot better person.
I was gonna say, maybe in a better place.
Yeah, so, that's the stimulus, if you will, of my education to it.
Sure.
I began reading more and more about it, and it's, and it's been with us forever, I mean, again, dating back five thousand years, um, the business model is a little bit akin to Jody's, uh, we're, right now I'm doing wholesale, and what I've been doing with my, uh, family, it's gonna be family-generated a lot, I'm retired, so I'm kinda in the background helping out my younger sons and daughters, is to scout around nationally and hunt down the best product and product line that would be the most useful here, so, I have found, and I've been trying my darndest to keep local, New York State or adjacent Pennsylvania or, uh, New England, but most of the stuff, generally speaking, is manufactured out of state, but I do have an in-state licensed federal grower, if you will, that started out in tomatoes and hydroponics and lettuce, Niagara County, who's branched off into this area, and has a very high-quality product that is much in demand, um, and this is the, the flower aspect of it, if you will.
There are a few I can actually help you out with.
Right, and I got a couple of names for you.
Okay.
So, um.
Thanks for bringing both of them in.
So, you know, it'll be complimentary in that I'm, I'm, I wanna keep local producers to the benefit of everybody, I'm, I'm a firm believer, when I go shopping, I wanna buy local, I wanna help local businesses, I don't want, I don't, I'm not a big-box guy, and I'm always kind of local, so that's what I'm trying to do, I'm trying to focus on products that are generated first in New York, and then reach out if we can't fill that, that lap, that line for our particular need, uh, a little bit like Jody's concept is, uh, my wife has personal, uh, personally used this stuff for the last year, that she has a debilitating, a vertebrate, non-operable situation in her neck, and she uses this every night, and it, and it works, she can sleep through the night with it, and she goes to the local, uh, pain management clinic down here in Lyndon Ave.
Oh, yeah.
And they said that they had many people who could use this because they're afraid to prescribe narcotics, and we all know, based on the recent news.
Absolutely.
What that's done to Rochester and environs.
Absolutely.
And, and more and more doctors are looking at this for just that very reason, they don't wanna get people hooked on this stuff because it can, you're gonna need to take it over time, you, you, you don't put somebody in a five-thousand-milligram tincture on day one, but you start them off on a path to get there if it needs to happen, some people are good with, uh, two-hundred-fifty-milligram, uh, tinctures, some people need a higher strength, depending on what they need and, and what it's for, so everybody's different in that regard, um, some people think that this is a dietary supplement, Uncle Sam holds it, is not so as of yet, the F D A is holding public hearings this coming month in D C on this for, uh, for a couple of reasons, one is that the big-box boys really want something to happen federally, so everybody isn't holding their breath, and when we're doing something which is akin to a, a scheduled class-one drug, i.e. marijuana, which is still in that list, this is not, but the law hit, the farm bill that, uh, President Trump signed into effect in December, left a little gray area.
A lot of gray.
And this is what people are holding their breath about, so that's why the F D A right now is holding public hearings to see what needs to be strengthened in that law to make sure that everybody's on the same playing field, because right now, it's, it's a little bit like the Wild West out there, every state is different, and they have different takes on it, uh, New York is a little bit more, I would say, liberal, that our governor has, uh, ceded, and I don't wanna use that as a pun, but literally, uh, the research and the development for this stuff, uh, back, uh, four years ago or so, and there are literally research-based growers who are not only growing this stuff, but they're researching this stuff and its effects and, and its production, and it's been a wonderful exercise for New Yorkers, because I, I, I think we're gonna really lead the way in, in, in going forward into making this not medicinally-based, but a supplement to medicines for that very reason, and that's why the research is on here, and it, and it's being governmentally funded, which is a nice, a nice way to do it.
Yeah, Cornell University has actually taken up, so I think they're in the middle of seven different studies.
And Binghamton is becoming the hotbed of this because, I think they ceded it because of the economy being what it is in the, in that southern tier basis.
That's southern tier, yeah.
Absence of Big Blue or its ramifications.
Sure.
And so they've had, picked local growers and researchers to go into this full blast with ceded monies, and have started, uh, quite the industry down there, and it's, and it's going all over, I'm talking to people out in the field who have gone there and they, and they've participated in the research, Uncle Sam has supplemented some of this, by the way, recently, with licensing and, uh, in coordination with states like New York, in that if you wanna really get into the production side, which I do not.
Me either.
It's a massive headache.
It's another whole ballgame, right?
But it, it requires a partnership with both federal and state people who would basically have a, a clean slate to come into your plant or factory or, or your, your growing area, and will literally take a look at your books any day or night, take any and all product that you have out there, and thank you and have a nice day, and just kinda leave you in the cold, but that's, that's the buy-in to get licensed now, um, that's coming very soon here, too, it's only being developed as to how that's gonna happen, but neither of us are gonna go there.
Right.
However, I, I will tell you that my daughter is protecting the beautiful bath bomb killer.
I'm telling you the bath bombs, and I, I wish, ladies, I tried, but I tried, I tried.
But it does work.
They have bath bombs with varying milligrams of C B D in them, and, yeah, you, so you would put it in.
The Luxe ones, do they have them too, and what's the law?
The C B D, no, no, no.
But anyway, that, that's something that, uh, I, I think will benefit the community here locally, and I do know that a couple of doctors are already looking for us to help fill that need to help people who would normally take the opiates, and this would be a pull-away from that, because they don't wanna go there, especially after what's been hitting the news lately.
I have doctors that come to the store daily.
And, and ask, do you have this and what can this help with?
What about the baths?
The baths, oh, yeah, Cornell University has actually brought their.
Makes sense, yeah.
Has actually brought their graduating class into the store, and, yeah, oh, yeah, looked at all of the different products and.
That's a lot for dogs' arthritis and stuff like that.
Yeah, absolutely, all pets, really, even horses.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
We put our, our dog on the plane last year to Denver, and she took it, and she was fine all the way out, and, yeah, all the way back.
And again, I mean, like, Mark, my, my story's very personal as well, you know, my mom was diagnosed with stage-four lung cancer, and, uh, they wanted to give her chemotherapy as palliative care, when we found out she had only three months to live, and I didn't know anything about C B D, I didn't even know C B D was a thing, and got online and, because I lived in New York State at the time, no one would even talk to me, where do you live, New York, click, so I got on a plane and I flew to Denver, me and my son, and walked in. So I got on a plane and I flew to Denver, me and my son, and walked into a transplant doctor, not a transplant, but a doctor who's transplanted from traditional medicine. And she gave me some stuff, and I brought it home to my mom, and I can tell you, within a half an hour, she was a different person. And I didn't, I thought it's the placebo effect, you know? But she was young. She was only 50 or 64 years old. So she was not ready. She spent a large amount of time in my bedroom, shut behind a door. She withdrew a lot, and it wasn't her. She was a very confident, very social person. And she came out after about a half an hour and sat down on the couch next to my husband, who was watching a Western, and in her right mind would have never watched a Western, and sat there and talked to my husband for an hour and watched the Western with him. So just the fact that, you know, and with that time, she just got better and better. Her symptoms started to subside a little bit, and obviously, at the end, there was not much, there was not enough CBD in the world to help, but...
And more comfortable.
Exactly, exactly.
Peace of mind.
So after she passed, I started going down a pretty dark road myself because she was my mom, and decided there was, I could either make something beautiful of her life and her death, or wallow in the sadness of it. And this is how I chose to honor her.
We're also going to offer home delivery. If people can't get to the store, we'll do delivery home, which I don't know if it's being done now or not.
A lot, yeah, pretty much.
Are you looking at the same kind of products that Jody's looking at?
Probably the same lines, different brands, of course, or different sources, but there'll be some overlap. Our hours will probably be the same.
I was just going to ask you, do you have time and hours?
The hours will be, probably be, you know, mid-morning to, you know, 6:00, 7:00 o'clock at night, maybe open one night till 9:00. No Sundays. Sundays, we hold sink or sink.
Yeah, it's family day.
Yeah. And so we would keep it in that genre.
All right. Board, we're going to have an opportunity on the 1st, certainly of May. This was an opportunity to at least get a chance to meet Bill and Jody and talk a little bit about, you know, what they're looking at, what they're looking to do, you know, some of the history behind. I think since this topic has come up with the two of them through Jim, I think all of us have had an opportunity to either do a little reading, share things. I know that when I was recently in Florida, I shared a couple of articles with Mr. Costello that, because it was from a different perspective, a different light, you know, you're hearing things here locally, and then you get into another state, another location, and in an area where predominantly it's seniors. And you start talking to different people and the number of what I'll call seniors. I'm sure that demographic is a little bit broader than that, but, I mean, there's a lot of seniors and talking about a lot of things that, you know, problems and issues and the benefits that they were seeing and the results that they were seeing that, you know, helped them, that had sold them as to help their overall quality of life, so...
It's a good idea, just to set the stage for the hearing, some of the questions we might ask.
So, yeah, thank you both for coming in. I would just, and we don't need to talk about it tonight, as a matter of fact, we probably shouldn't, but I would just suggest that for the public hearing, have a concept of what your sign package is going to look like.
I actually did receive Jody's, and I've been working with Bill.
Because I think what we've learned from past experience, it's not so much what's in the store, it's what is being portrayed by the signage. And I think especially Bill, with your location right there at the Four Corners, you know, the worst thing to have happen is to have you in there, start up business, and then have his phone blow up because no one really, because of the way the signage is portrayed.
Right.
Or what people think may be happening in the store. So it's just, I think, something just to keep you, you know, be mindful.
We're going to keep a very simple...
Mine's very simple, yes.
So Jody, if you, in Greece, what are you?
Yeah, we're right across the street from West, from the Greece Ridge Mall.
Okay.
So we're at 2300 West Ridge Road.
Okay.
And if you're familiar with Ridge Road at all, we're directly across the street from Barlouli.
Okay. And then, so what is your, what is your sign, say?
It is just C B, capital C, capital D, capital B, lowercase e, p, o, t, just in red and white, very simple, very plain.
I will send her sign to you tomorrow, as I say, Bill and I are working on a sign.
Okay.
What are you calling yourself?
I'm going to use our LLC name, which is Acadia.
Acadia Group.
Right. That's going to be our primary focus.
That was what was on the resolution for the public hearing.
Yes.
Didn't know that was the name of the...
Yes, that's an LLC. So we'll be using that as our moniker with probably a lowercase CBD or something. That's it. It's not going to be anything but.
Okay. Board, other questions? Okay. Staff, anything that we haven't chatted about tonight that you think we should at least put on the table for discussion?
Well, the only thing that comes to mind is, and I certainly have a good feel for both of you, and I've been talking to you now for several weeks, but I'm certain somebody from the public's going to stand up and say, are you going to be selling marijuana for these locations in the event the state of New York approves it, the use?
Absolutely not, and I'll tell you why. I already know what the semantics are for what they're going to require, and I am not prepared, nor do I even actually like the THC side of it, to tell you the truth.
It sounds like you don't even need to expand.
No.
You're expanding your business already.
I have no intentions, none whatsoever.
I haven't given it any thought, quite frankly. I know it's going to be, what I have researched on this current partnership process is quite the headache. As a matter of fact, I approached an old friend of mine who was a beekeeper, asking him if he was interested in infusing honey with the CBD, which is out there.
Sure.
You can.
And the headaches involved were just too, too much.
Yeah. Yeah, got it.
He's got a good thing going already.
Eh, yeah.
Our hands are going to be busy.
Okay. All right. Okay, well, thank you both for taking time to come in and share a little bit more information and help us better understand. And certainly, we'll look forward to seeing you on May 1st, and we'll go through the process. We'll do, we'll do each one of you individually because we'll, you know, concentrate on that particular location, you know, your, you know, hours of operation, square footage of the building, employees, signage, you know, those types of things, because it'll be more, you know, specific to your location, you know, Route 250, Five Mile Line Road, and go from there. So, okay. Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And again, thank you, thank you very much. Appreciate your willingness to share all the information.
I'm sorry, no disrespect, I didn't respond though.
That doesn't surprise me.
All right, Board, thank you. I'll just indicate that, again, under informational items, the website update, we withdrew that, you know, pending some additional work by Mr. Renner, working with our vendor, and we'll have some additional information here in the future. And seeing no further business to come before the April 24th, 2019 work session, the meeting will stand adjourned at 8:40 PM. Thank you to everyone that participated, and thank you to Penfield TV.